Meeting will come to order for December 13th. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner Galt?
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Kayler?
Present. Commissioner Abraham will be doing our invocation tonight and our pledge of allegiance is going to be led by several of our kids that are here tonight from the Christmas parade. So, thank you all for doing that tonight. As soon as we get finished with our invocation, you come up to the mic. So, if everyone will stand, please.
Father, with your heart in heaven, we thank you so much for today. We thank you for each other. Father, we truly believe that this is a magical time of year and not surprised that this is the time that your son was born. So, we shouldn't be surprised that this time of year, everybody is a little bit nicer, speak a kind word, help those that need it. So, Father, our prayer is that as this Christmas season comes and passes, that those types of attitudes last longer than just in December. These things we ask in your show's name. Amen.
Amen. If y'all were going up to this.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Good job. City manager, are there any additions or deletions?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so we have a presentation tonight. We have Molly Thomasello here tonight with our Christmas Parade float winners and we had a great parade this year. Thank you, Molly.
Hello, everybody. Full house. Yeah, we had an exceptional parade this year. Just want to thank everybody for coming out. I know this is a really big deal for those of you that work on the floats every year and as the City and Parks Department, we truly appreciate it. This year, since I've been here, we've not seen as large a crowd that we had lining the streets, the amount of candy. I know that the floats are usually phenomenal every year, but this year, I think some of you just really knocked them out of the park. So, I know you work on those dedication, carpentry skills, creativity, and we appreciate that and the community appreciates that, too. So, we've got a little bit to get through here, but what we'd like to do is we have top five in some categories, so first through fifth place. The first through third place also receive a small prize from the City and the Parks Department, but everybody will receive a trophy. So, Cheryl's going to help me with that, hand them out. And what we'll do is we'll start with the theme float category. We have a nonfloat category, a school float, drill team, band, and religious float. We'll just move on through those and pause in between. So, I'm going to start with the fifth place in the theme float. When you hear your name, you can go ahead and come up and Cheryl will help you get your trophy. We have fifth place with the theme float for the 2016 Christmas Parade is the Cub Scout Pack Number 20. If you guys want to wait to hold your applause till we get through the theme float group, that would be great. And this year's parade theme was Pictures of Paducah at Christmas Time. So, we really had a large variety. We had some throwback themes to the floats. We had some current, kind of up and coming, what you're seeing in Paducah right now, but a lot for the imagination. Again, Cub Scout Pack Number 20. Thank you. In fourth place, we have the Girl Scouts of Kentuckyana, the Paducah Reedland Chapter. Bless you.
Thank you.
If you're a third, second, or first place on your way up to get your trophy, stop by Thank you, Girl Scouts of Kentuckyana. In third place, we have BFW and Markham Engineering.
Litch wants to take your picture.
In second place for the theme float, we have Girl Scout Troop 1778 and also part of that was Troop 1773.
Right.
Just Brownies and Girl Scouts.
Six spray, maybe.
And in first place for the nonfloat category, we have Goodwin Farms. They may not be here tonight, so we will, okay, we will get that to them. Thank you, everybody in the theme float category. All right, next is the nonfloat category. All right, so round of applause for the nonfloat category. Next, we have the school float. In third place, we have Black Sheep Offroading. In third place, we have the MCHS Pep Club. In second place, we have Murray State University Paducah Campus. And in first place, we have St. Mary's School System. Thank you, guys. Next category is Drill Team. We only have two in this category and second place goes to Silver Linings Homeschool Color Guard. First place goes to Paducah Quick Step Cloggers. Thank you for the Drill Team. All right, the next category is Band and we only have two in this category as well. Second place goes to MCHS. It doesn't matter, we can give it to you, that's fine. And first place goes to PTHS. Thank you, guys. Next category is Drill Team. We only have two in this category and second place goes to Silver Linings Homeschool Color First place goes to Paducah Quick Step Cloggers. Thank you for the Drill Team. All right, the next category is Band and we only have two in this category as well. Second place goes to MCHS. It may not be here. It doesn't matter, we can give it to you, that's fine. And first place goes to PTHS. All right, in our last category, we have the Religious Float category. Third place goes to Trinity United Methodist Church. They may or may not be here tonight, we'll hold that for them. Second place goes to Highland Cumberland Presbyterian Church. All right, and then in first place is Millborn Chapel Cumberland Presbyterian Church. Okay, I'd like to give a round of applause to everybody who participated in this year's parade.
And I just wanted to thank each one of you all that participated in the parade because, you know, you make Paducah look great at Christmas. Thank you so much for doing that for us.
I'm good.
Did I ask if there was any additions or deletions?
I'm home most of the year.
Hey, I'm Dinkin'.
She's waving, I'm just waving, like. She's waving, I'm like, hey, how you doing? She's like, I don't know, what's wrong with you?
Is that funny? I love it. It's just funny, though. You're on a plane, committed to Paducah, full plane, nobody, don't know anybody.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Awesome.
I wish they all buy a house here.
Okay, so Commissioner Abraham, you have the minutes tonight.
Yes, I do. I move that the reading of the minutes for the December 6, 2016 City Commission meeting be waived and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Under motions, Commissioner Galt?
I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Documents, certificates of liability insurance, Johnson Fire Services LLC, Danny Cope and Sons, Youngblood Excavating, Will Thomas, AST Environmental, Inc., two right-of-way bonds for Will Thomas and AST Environmental, three quick claim deed and lots of wheels, LLC and Mega Properties and Developmental, Inc. for flood wall remnants, deed with Jenny and Harry Keeling and Seth Keeling for 2400 Spruce Street, contracts and agreements, franchise extension agreement with Comcast Cable, Heartland Region, one-year renewal agreement with Harper Construction LLC for concrete program, grant agreement with US Department of Homeland Security for 2016 Port Security Grant, Community Development Block Grant Agreement with the Kentucky Department for Local Government for Four Rivers Recovery Center, Paducah Water Works Financial Highlights for October 2016, bids for Planning Department, 151 Clement Street, Kenneth W. Knight.
Second.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Under municipal order, Commissioner Rhodes?
Under recommendation, the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah ordered that personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Hi, Martin.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. Any questions on the personnel actions tonight?
No.
I have none.
Thank you.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, you have the second one?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order accepting the bid of Kenneth W. Knight in the amount of $100 plus recording and deed preparation fees for real property located at 151 Clement Street and authorizing the mayor to execute a deed and all other documents necessary to complete the sale be adopted.
Second.
Steve?
Good evening. If you have any questions.
Thank you. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Okay, we have several ordinances for adoption tonight, so those will move pretty quickly. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the proposed final subdivision for Greenway Village Subdivision Phase Two, accepting all public improvements, easements, and right-of-way and authorizing the mayor to subscribe a certificate of approval on the plat. The ordinance is summarized as follows. An ordinance approving the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the proposed final subdivision for property known as the Greenway Village Subdivision Phase Two, accepting all public improvements, dedication of right-of-way, and public utility easements. In addition, the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to subscribe a certificate of approval on the plat.
Second. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Galt, you have the next one?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Galt's LLC for the purchase of uniforms for police department employees and authorizing the mayor to execute contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the bid of Galt's LLC for uniforms for employees in the police department at the uniform unit price as contained in the bid dated November 12, 2016 for a period of two years beginning upon execution of the contract and authorizing the mayor to execute said contract.
Second.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance officially naming a portion of the newly constructed five-lane roadway as New Holt Road, which has been completed as part of the Olivet Church Road Improvement Project. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the name of a portion of a newly constructed five-lane roadway originating at the intersection of Hickelville Road and New Holt Road and proceeding through Kentucky Oaks Mall to the intersection of the existing reconstructed three-lane portion of Olivet Church Road be New Holt Road.
Second. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to execute all documents necessary between the Delta Regional Authority and the City of Paducah for a community infrastructure fund matching grant for the flood wall pump station number two rehabilitation project. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute all documents necessary with the Delta Regional Authority for a community infrastructure fund matching grant in the amount of $400,000 for the flood wall pump station number two rehabilitation project. The projected cost is estimated to be $5,105,000, which will be provided from the city's fiscal year 2017 budget and meet the 10% required grant match.
Second.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting, I'm sorry, an ordinance adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky Final Annual Budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby adopts a final budget for fiscal year 2016 that reflects all adjustments made through the fiscal year and any adjustments required by the independent financial orders, the appropriations of city government for a total of $74,510,750 and summarized by funds as follows. General Fund, $34,237,445, I'm sorry, $34,237,445. MAP, $1,338,670. Investments, $5,208,985. CDBG, I'm sorry, is that right, right there? Yeah, $737,500. E911, $1,464,120. Court awards, $30,375. Bond Fund, $1,274,360. Solid Waste, $4,691,660. Civic Center, $142,560. Rental, $159,705. Radio, $166,815. Fleet, $511,715. Fleet Trust, $1,900,1,955. Self-insurance, $1,194,345. Health Insurance, $3,938,110. And, what is this here?
AEPF.
Okay, all right. AEPF, PF, PF, TRSTS, $1,449,890 for a total of $74,510,750.
Second.
Goodness.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Galt?
Well, Tammy gave me a two-page ordinance as my very last one to read.
Wow, congratulations.
That's cool.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky authorizing and approving a general obligation lease with Community Financial Services Bank in an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $3 million to provide financing for the costs of the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of improvements to the Julian Carroll Convention Center, including related and appurtenant costs, providing for the payment and security of the lease, creating a sinking fund, authorizing the execution of various documents related to such lease, making certain designations regarding such lease, and authorizing and approving an inter-local cooperation agreement with the County of McCracken, Kentucky to provide additional sources of payment for the principal of and interest on such lease. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The ordinance authorizes City of Paducah, Kentucky, the city, to execute and deliver a general obligation lease agreement, the financing lease, in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $3 million with Community Financial Services Bank, the financing lesser in order to finance improvements to the Julian Carroll Convention Center and inter-local cooperation agreement, the interlocal agreement with the County of McCracken, Kentucky, the county, whereby the county will remit to the city a portion of certain taxes collected by the county under sections 91A.390 and 91A.392 of the Kentucky Revised Statutes as amended in order to provide funds to the city to pay or reimburse the city for the payment of debt service on the financing lease. The ordinance approves the forms of the financing lease and the interlocal agreement presented to the City Commission of the city and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the financing lease and the interlocal agreement with such changes therein as shall not be adverse to the city and as may be approved by the mayor and city clerk. The ordinance further provides for a general obligation pledge to assess sufficient taxes to comply with the obligations to pay lease payments under the financing lease. The full text of the section relating to the pledge to levy and assess tax to pay the financing is as follows. Section 2, General Obligation Pledge pursuant to the Constitution of the Commonwealth and Chapter 66 of the Kentucky Revised Statute, as amended, the general obligation statutes, the obligation of the city created by the financing lease shall be a full general obligation of the city and for the prompt payment of the lease payments as defined in the financing lease. The full faith, credit, and revenue of the city are hereby pledged. During the period the financing lease is outstanding, there shall be and there hereby is levied on all the taxable property in the city in addition to all other taxes without limitation as to rate a direct tax annually in an amount sufficient to pay the financing lease payments on the financing lease when and as due. It being hereby found and determined that current tax rates are within all applicable limitations, said tax shall be and is hereby ordered computed, certified, levied, and extended upon the tax duplicate and collected by the same officers in the same manner and at the same time, that taxes for general purposes for each of said years are certified, extended, and collected. Said tax shall be placed before and in preference to all other items and for the full amount thereof, provided however that in each year to the extent that the other taxes or revenues of the city are available for the payment of the lease payments and are appropriated for such purposes, the amount of such direct tax upon all the taxable property in the city shall be reduced by the amount of such other taxes or revenues still available and appropriated.
Second.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 2-591B and modifying its contents by specifying what public officials have the authority of citation officer under the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends Section 591 of Chapter 2 of the Paducah Code of Ordinances to add and delete what public officials are citation officers under the Code of the City of Paducah.
Second. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance completely repealing Chapter 42, Section 1 through 100, the Nuisance Code and related ordinances, and replacing them in their entirety with a code enforcement board and related ordinances, thus revising Chapter 42. thus revising Chapter 42 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah is revising Chapter 42 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah and repealing specific already enacted ordinances in order to create a code enforcement board for the purpose of regulating and enforcing nuisances, property maintenance, and other code ordinances that are to be adopted herein and for allowing the imposition of remedial measures, fees, and our fines, and/or fines, which will be published as follows in accordance with the Kentucky Revised Statutes. Violation, Section 42-43, Ordinance Fund Schedule. Violations of ordinances that are enforced by the code enforcement board shall be subject to the following schedule of civil fines. A, if a citation for a violation of the Nuisance Code is not contested by the person charged with the violation, the penalties set forth in this subsection may apply per inspection. If the code enforcement officer is required to make inspections beyond the initial inspection and one additional follow-up inspection to determine if the required corrections have been made, then the code enforcement board shall assess the following fines not to exceed the value of the property as determined by the property valuation administrator. Inspections, abandoned vehicles and appliances, grass, weeds, litter, solid waste, other nuisances defined by 42-50A 1 through 7. The third inspection in all subsequent inspections, $100. B, if the citation is contested and a hearing before the code enforcement board is required, the following maximum penalties may be imposed at the discretion of the board per inspection not to exceed the value of the property as recorded by the property valuation administrator. Inspections for maintenance, property maintenance, third inspection, $250, fourth inspection, $350, and fifth inspection in all subsequent inspections, $500. Section 42-44, lien, fines, charges, abatement costs, fees, penalties, attorney fees, and cost. The city shall possess a lien on the property owned by the person found by a non-applicable final order or by a final judgment of the court to have committed a violation of the code for all fines assessed for the violation and for all charges, costs, penalties, abatement costs, and fees, including without limitation attorney's fees and a $30 administration fee incurred by the city in connection with the enforcement of the code. The lien shall bear interest at the rate of 4% per annum until paid. An affidavit of the code enforcement officer shall constitute prima facie evidence of the amount of the lien and the regularity of the proceedings pursuant to KRS 65.8801 to KRS 65.8839. B, a notice of the lien may be recorded in the office of the county clerk. The lien shall be noticed to all persons from the time of its recording and shall bear interest until paid. The lien shall continue for 10 years following the date of the non-applicable final order or final court judgment. C, subject to Section 42-45I, the lien shall take precedence over all other liens except state, county, school board, and city taxes, and may be enforced by judicial proceedings, including a foreclosure action. D, in addition to the remedy prescribed in subsection A, the person found to have committed the violation shall be personally liable for the amount of all fines assessed for the violation and for all charges, costs, penalties, abatement costs, and fees, including without limitation attorney's fees and a $30 administration fee incurred by the city in connection with the enforcement of the code. The fore-said amount shall bear interest at the rate of 4% per annum until paid. The city may bring a civil action against the responsible owner or owners and shall have the same remedies as provided for the recovery of a debt. E, the city shall be entitled to recover from the responsible owner or owners all attorney fees and other costs incurred by the city by reason of the collection upon an enforcement of the responsible owner's or owner's liability hereunder in the lien which secures the same. F, upon payment determination of the code enforcement board or court order, the city shall be authorized to release any lien filed hereunder and recorded in the office of the county clerk.
Second.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
We're down to the city manager's report.
I'll be brief, just kind of track back a little bit. The approval of the grant for the Floodwall Project course is a first step on the road to implementing that project that the mission approved in the budget last year. It's an in-house project that, by agreement with the Corps of Engineers, sets us up to allow part of the funds that we're putting into this to count as matching funds down the road. To that end, both houses of Congress have passed the Ward bill, which reauthorizes our project and sets it up to begin the appropriation process. So everything's looking good in that respect. Also, the action taken tonight on the $3 million borrowing, even though those documents pledge city tax dollars, as everybody knows, the revenue stream for the retirement of those, of that debt, I was going to say bonds, but it's not bonds, it's a bank borrowing, as we all know, is coming from the 2% transit room tax that the county controls. And the county did take action last night to approve the interlocal agreement between the city and the county where they dedicate that. So everything's looking good there as well. Reminder to everybody in the community that Thursday night at 5 o'clock, from 5 to 7, is the Public Input Meeting for the Broadway Jefferson Conversion Study. So come one, come all, and bring your questions. And there'll be plenty of folks there to visit with you and respond to questions and take your thoughts and put them into the process. Couple of things going on at the staff level. We had our Next Steps Workshop for our survey way back in July or August. And one of the priority areas that came on there had to do with funding for infrastructure projects. Recall last budget session, the Floodwall Project and the stormwater planning process emerged as a pretty clear-cut number one and number two. And we were able to find the resources to get those off the ground, but it left us still needing to sort of put in place some kind of process to continue project evaluation going forward. So since the Next Step Workshop, we've had a committee of staff people working to identify possible criteria that could be used in the project ranking process. And they've looked at a number that are used in other cities, and there are a great number of them. And they whittled it down some. And the next step in that will be to get together with the commission in a workshop and take a look at the various criteria options and try to select a manageable number of criteria to use to evaluate and actually rank projects going forward, which helps obviously establish the priority order for the city commission. But I think it also gives more standing and credibility to those particular projects when we go to seek funding, whether it be from grant agencies or partnerships with others or possibly even some kind of revenue enhancement locally. So we'll get back to that in January. Also, next month, we will be bringing forward, Rick will be bringing forward, a contract proposal for the stormwater plan. It might seem like that's been long in coming, and it really has been, but it's such a large and comprehensive project that even though we've been engaged with a company, at least in the discussion stage, we've yet to enter into a contract. There's been several meetings just to identify the proper scope of services here to determine what it is we think we need to be doing. So that'll come before the commission next month for your consideration. That's all I have.
Well, I'd just like to say that the other day when I was meeting with you, Jeff, Pam had put together, I think, three pages of things that we have accomplished here at the city level. And I'd like to thank each of the commissioners on what you have worked on this last year. Three pages of things that we have accomplished just this year. So I don't know if you've shared that with them, Pam, but if you would, put it in their mailbox and let them look over that because it's, it really is pretty amazing that we've done that much in one year. One of the things I'm most proud of is the stormwater management plan because when those folks came here that July after that torrential flash flood that we had, which, we're not saying that the stormwater management plan can ever take care of that volume of water at one time, but it's where we needed to start. And I promised those people that we would. And I appreciate you all supporting that. So I just, you know, we've got a great team of people that work here. And I know going forward that the city's going to do well. But I just wanted to tell you all how much I appreciate your work on these issues with the City of Paducah.
Is it time for commissioner comments?
Yes.
Well, I just want to say thank you for your service for 10 years with the city. Not eight, ten. I know, it's 10. I know, six, six and four, and for years for eight. And I think this afternoon, when the ambassador said it as service, they truly meant that, and I know it too. So thank you for all that you've done. You're leaving us in a better place. So thank you very much.
You made a difference.
Thank you.
I, first, the mayor, you're a Hall of Famer in my book. Your first time you ran, you lost about one vote, and you didn't kick up a fuss about it. You know, there wasn't any recount to recambers or any of that.
We did.
You did, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we did.
Correct it.
But I didn't talk about it.
Well, it didn't, it didn't change. You still lost. But the next time you ran, the next time you ran, you were mayor pro temp. So that was, that was pretty awesome. You served the city well, and I've enjoyed serving with you. Carol. My Mayfield partner.
You're going to miss it.
I'm going to miss you, but I have, I have a shirt. I will find you, I will, and you will have, if, when, if and when, Tim and Beach Mayfield, you will have to come here on camera and dawn the blue and white. But, uh...
When that happens.
But I, I've enjoyed working with you. And it's been, it's been a friendship that will continue. But as a group, the thing about the commission, it's made up of different folks. We all have the same thought process. We want to help the city get to where it needs to be, a place of destination. And whenever we have individuals step up that want to throw their hat in the ring and take on sometimes this thankless job, I applaud our guys all the time. I encourage anyone to run and try to make a difference. So you two ladies have served that very well. So I appreciate it, working with you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's, it's, you know, it's bittersweet, but it's been an ebb and a flow of lots of learning and, you know, it hasn't always been great. I mean, we sometimes make it sound like it's been rosy, but it hasn't always been great. We've learned a lot, we've grown a lot. I've learned a lot from all the department heads. And, um, you know...
You see that bruise right there?
But it really is a team, and it's a family. And I think a lot of people don't always understand that. But that's exactly what it's like here. It's been a privilege.
Thank you.
I would be remiss if I did not thank Carol. I can't tell many times I've called Carol when I'm sitting in my, the quietest place that etcetera is in our hallway or the staircase. And that's where I usually called Carol and said,